Hello and welcome to today's meeting of Democrats of Greater Tucson. My name is Larry Bodine and I'm the president, I'll be your host today. And we have a wonderful speaker today, Andres Portella. Andres, give us away. All right, we're really delighted to hear from you today. Democrats of Greater Tucson is the best bargain that you'll find in politics today. It's only $20 a year. And you get to be, as Kathy would say, in the in crowd. You get to meet all of the candidates and people running for office. And you get to ask them questions, which is a rare opportunity. But we get that here at Democrats of Greater Tucson. Let's turn to Sandy Benyon. Tell us about the upcoming programs we have.
Coming up, we have, next week, we have Paul Cunningham, who is the city councilman from Ward 2. And that ward doesn't have a contest this year. They'll have to have a contest two years from now. But he's going to tell us what's going on in his ward. Followed by Marco Lopez, who is one of the announced Democratic candidates for governor of Arizona. And that'll be interesting. And the following week after that, we have Diane Neville, who is the Democratic chair of LD10. And she's going to tell us what they're doing and what they're going to start doing. As you know, their present state senator is now announced to run for Congress. That's the next three weeks.
All right, thank you very much, Sandy. Now, a number of people have been asking about our next happy hour. Why don't you bring us up to date? Christina Early, member of our board.
Hi, everybody. We had a great turnout for our Drinking Democratically Happy Hour on the 26th. And we talked with our contact, Neil Scott at Augustine's Kitchen. And we worked out another happy hour on June the 29th, from 4 to 6. And so that's a little bit later. And we have the room till 6 o'clock. We have it set up and Larry's going to be sending out, I believe, emails to let everybody know. And I will put the link to the Eventbrite website where you can register. Because we want to keep track of how many people are coming in. There's information there about Augustine Kitchen. If you want to make reservations for dinner, we ask that you call the restaurant directly. To do that, you can also see their menu. And there's a link there to the DGT website. So mark your calendars. Let's get together, let's have some good democratic talk. On June the 29th, from 4 to 6, at Augustine Kitchen in the Marquinhado downtown on Congress, just west of the freeway.
Thanks so much. I know I'm planning to come. It's a wonderful event. You get to talk to like-minded people. And we can diss on Trump and talk up our favorite candidates. So Lucy has her hand up. Lucy Messing, one of our members. Go ahead, Lucy.
Hi, Larry. I just wanted to let people know that the Tancabertie Dems has canceled their meeting on Saturday, when we were going to host the LD9 and the LD10 legislators. And that is due to the memorial service for our dear Annie E. Peterson. So that drop-in with Tancabertie is canceled. I know a lot of people were planning to attend.
Well, I hope you can find a way to reschedule it. Because it sounded like a great program. You've had all the speakers from, all the representatives from LD9 and LD10. Well, let's turn now to our speaker. Andres Portella is an Afro-Latino activist, running for the Tucson City Council in Ward 6. He's on the ballot in the Democratic primary, which is going to be coming up on August 3rd this year. Andres is a new American leader, selected by a nonprofit organization that recruits people of immigrant heritage to run for elected office. He is also a Manzan Institute Fellow. The institute collects the brightest minds on public policy in Arizona. And he's the deputy director of two organizations devoted to voting rights. And that would include the Arizona Coalition for Change, which advocates for voting rights, as well as Our Voice, Our Vote Arizona. Andres has said he would talk to us about building community through prioritizing our home, which is basically H for housing, O for opportunity, M for mobility justice, and E for environmental justice. And with that, Andres, the floor is yours.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, for coming through. I'm going to drop something in chat so we can all stay along. One of the biggest points of my campaign has been accessibility. And so what I just dropped in the chat was resource. If you click on the link, it'll take you to my website, which will also take you to Democrats of Greater Tucson One Sheet. On that one sheet, it'll kind of just break down what I'm going to talk about today. So let's root ourselves in this moment. My name is Andres Portella. I'm running for Ward 6 Councilmember. I am the third son, my bad. I am the son of Tanisha, who's third-generation Black Tucsonan, raised in Western Hills. And my father is Andres Portella Senior, who is from Bayamón, Puerto Rico. My first step into this political space came at an early age. Diapers, sitting at city council meetings, and my dad would advocate for skate parks and sidewalks. You get to see the blood and sweat and tears of someone who is in our community, fully invested with having five kids, throughout, just navigating space. So he really wanted to make sure that he prioritized our safety and we had a place to go during the summer months. And so what that transitioned to was me graduating from high school, being very young and wanting to find space and opportunity. I joined a soccer club, which led to a scholarship at Paradise Valley Community College. As a student athlete, I found myself not having the place to live. So I ended up living in my car. I was exposed to the elements. I was in my truest, rawest form, struggling. But after all of that, I decided to come back home, which is Southern Arizona, born and raised between Tucson and Sierra Vista. And from there, I knew I had to do something so that my community didn't have to experience this life of living in their car or feeling that vulnerable. So I got an internship with Congressman Ron Barber. And that's where I learned the thoughts of radical hospitality. I got to watch both his staff, the councilman, my bad congressman. Goodness gracious, I keep saying council. Congressman Ron Barber. And then I got to see Representative Grealva's staff. And I knew at that moment of being so willing to give up self for community, I knew that's what I wanted to do with my life. But when you graduate from the University of Arizona, there was a level of not knowing what it was next. So I went ahead and told my story of what it was like to grow up as a kid, who was mixed-race, living in Southern Arizona as a TEDx speaker. And I thanked my community for raising me. I thanked them for the lowriders that used to sit in Reed Park. I talked about the hot dogs that we all used to have when we did spring training at Tucson Electric Park. All of those things that helped raise me and cultivate me, I was able to thank Tucson and Sierra Vista for. But I knew that my purpose was to jump into housing because I'd lived the lived experience of being both homeless or houseless. And then jumping into being a tenant with my girlfriend at the time, my wife now, whom I'd been, I'd been with my wife since I was 13. We've been dating since we were 13. We got married five years ago, this Sunday. So I knew that that was a space I wanted to jump into, which was civil rights and housing policy. And when I jumped into this space, the city of Tucson really activated and helped me get this level of understanding. So they sent me to a few different housing markets. Austin, San Antonio, Baltimore, and New Orleans. And Austin, we learned about what it's like to scale up fast and not have very many solutions to unaffordability. And San Antonio, we looked at a parity housing market. And we got to see what it's like to have similar, but a little bit more expensive housing market. And Baltimore, we got to see what it was like for the city to fund housing stock, but not focus on affordability. And then in New Orleans, we got to see how climate ultimately can shape housing policy. And it was for the negative in New Orleans. And when I came back from that trip, I was offered a position as a senior policy advisor for Councilmember Santa Cruz. And that's where I feel like I had my most growth during that time. I was able to interact with the community and really focus on housing policy. So out of that, we got the Commission on Equitable Housing and Community Development. And the overall purpose of that was to give people the opportunity to advocate for themselves. And as I was writing the framework for that, I knew we had to be very intentional. We had to look at policy differently. We had to look at it through a human element. What is the lived experience of someone who's lived on the street? And how does that affect their fight for housing? As a developer, what does that look like to have to build housing and think about costs? As a small business owner, what does that look like to have to find a place in the right neighborhood so your business can thrive? And so we brought all of that to the table. And this commission is finally taking space. And I think we're going to get some good work out of it. But my second part of the work was the Office of Equity. And a lot of people have heard about that because it's starting to take shape now. My whole job was to write that framework, write the job. I wanted to write it for myself, but I'm running for office because there's so much more I can do. The Office of Equity is purely going to take what it looks like for us to use the data, to use lived experience, use race, use socioeconomics, and turn that into policy. And that's essentially what we're looking for. And so here we are. My platform is home. That is housing, opportunity, mobility justice, and environmental justice. So if you get nothing else from me, you're going to remember the Diana Ross song, "Home." Hopefully, that played in your head just now. So I'll jump into housing and why it's the one thing that I'm, like, the majority, the way I think, that is my core competency. And everyone in Tucson deserves to find place and space in their home and housing. And so my goal is to keep Tucson families in their home, but also look at those who do not have space. So if we think about the numbers, prior to the economic downturn, local rent had jumped 7%, and that's 5%. We were at 5% for the whole state of Arizona, 7% in the Injustice City of Tucson. So that's for a one-bedroom apartment, that's about $800, jumping to about $1,100. And so that was just the cost of housing. But then when we think about the constables from the county perspective, they were seeing in March of 2020 about 4,376 evictions. And that was pre-COVID. During the pandemic, it was reported that there were going to be, that Pima County was holding on about 4,000 evictions. And the city only had $4.5 million from federal funds to address this. That's where I, my job was. I resided in Councilmember Santa Cruz's office. And $4.5 million came in. And we started to activate. And we started to see more of, more need than we had resources. And so we really, for me, it was a humbling moment. I had to think about sleeping in my car. I had to think about sleeping in my car and thinking about the temperatures outside. And then I had to think about the working, the working folks that we saw downtown. And if you go downtown, you won't see much of it anymore. But I remember during the Occupy Wall Street, I mean, the Occupy Tucson movement, my parents were very good about making me, exposing me to things so I can learn empathy. And it was more than just an exposure. My dad, retired boxing coach, retired Army. He broke his spine in the Army and was medically discharged. But throughout all of, raising all of his children, he did an amazing job of making sure that we activated for our community. So during the Occupy Tucson, we were down there handing out water bottles, using whatever money we had to buy meals and really just focusing on people. And I remember during that moment of seeing someone who worked at the subway downtown, sleeping in the park at night. And that's where really we started, I started to think about what are my goals as a councilmember? And how do we increase collaboration, empathy, and diligence? So for housing, I have a few objectives. I want to use that Commission on Equitable Housing and Development, which I created over the last few years, to do away with R1 zoning, to create opportunities for differentiated housing stock. And that simply means, we may have to use some density, but I do not believe that we can't do it without our community. And we may have to look at opportunities for a larger planning process. But what we can't do is look at outdated zoning practices to be the solution. I also want to focus on tenants and renters. Pima County has done an amazing job of activating people in space and making sure. Oh, Carolyn, I'm just about to get to combating homelessness. Combating homelessness is ultimately extremely important to me because I've lived that experience. So when I worked for the city, we started this project called Housing First, the Housing First Initiative. And essentially, that's put people in housing first and then do the wraparound services. And so I would, I want to see that over the next few years, my next four years, see that as a program where we have 200 to 300. We are doing away with those who are chronically homeless. We want to place them and then provide those wraparound services. And so that's my focus, is continuing the Housing First Initiative, but making sure that we prop that up with the proper resources. And so once we place folks in housing, we really need to make sure that they can stand housing. So I want to use the, the resources that Pima County has given us to the right to counsel and install someone within our Office of Equity and call them a public advocate. And ultimately, their job is to make sure that we do not have predatory landlords. Their job is to create a landlord's watch list to make sure that people are not being abused in housing and to understand the nuances of our housing market with the assistance of Housing and Community Development, but independent. But we need to focus on those who are low income. And the way we do that is through source of income protections. What I heard every day is people come into Lane's office and they would come to me and say, "Well, I got this housing voucher, but I have nowhere to go." And people should have access to opportunity. They should have access to find where they want to find home. And so creating this protection, where you can take that housing voucher and use it anywhere in the city, that's where we give people the opportunity to choose where they can find place, where they can find home, where they can find decent and affordable housing, where they can find clean water. And so that's another policy push that I want to make. But also, my parents are getting old. They are aging in placers. My mom just sold her business. She's been a small business owner for the last 20 years. And she's trying to figure out what's next. But really, we have to protect our aging in placers. So really, I want to use that public advocate, Housing and Community Development, to work with Pima County to get all eligible seniors automatically enrolled in the Senior Property Valuation Protection Program. This program freezes home values and shields aging in placers from large tax bills. But ultimately, I also want to create new housing stock from the city. We have to do that through land banking. We have to use that. We have to be responsible and sustainable and use old businesses and install folks in those and retrofit them for housing. And so that's, that's ultimately my goal. My goal is to keep Tucson families in their homes. I've been a tenant. I am now a homeowner. I have been homeless. And so we really have to use the Housing First Initiative. We have to use the Commission on Housing. We have to use the Office of Equity to make sure that our community feels safe and can find home in place. That's housing. Hopefully, I'm not talking too much. I'm going to keep going. If you have any questions, please throw them in the chat. Andres, can you finish the sentence about Pima County is doing before you said? So Pima County is ultimately working on the right to counsel. And that's extremely important. What they have found is that when folks are facing eviction, they have, if they have access to a right to counsel, legal assistance, they are more likely to stay in place. They are not going to end up on the street. And so what I would like to use is, like to do is leverage the work that Pima County is doing with the city of Tucson and not recreate the wheel. Ultimately, work partner, which is the hard work, and making sure that folks find place and home. Hopefully, that answers the question. Opportunity. When I use the word opportunity, and on that link I send everyone, if you're still on my website, you'll see a dictionary. On that glossary, you'll see the word opportunity. And what I mean by that is making sure we have access to quality housing, quality schools, decent paying jobs, access to health care, and a variety of transit options. So in my position, my goal for Ward 6 and ultimately the city of Tucson is to do two things. Focus on poverty and create more opportunities for government accessibility. So within my 100-day plan, you'll see a great outline on my website. But what I really want to do is increase the way people interact with local government. And the way we do that is, the city of Tucson receives 20% of all the refugees who come to the city of Tucson. That means we have more languages being spoken in our small town than just English and Spanish. We need that reflected on our websites. We need that reflected in our marketing and branding. So really, I want to create work with our IT department to make sure that we can increase the level of accessibility to our local families. And so that starts with creating accessibility. And the way we do that is through looking through a public health lens. We focus on the social determinants of health, the economic stability, education, health and human care, neighborhoods and built environment, and social and community context. And so for me, it's really focusing on who is in our community and how do we reach them? So we have a question. Allison Hughes wants to discuss, "How would you vote on the water issue in tomorrow's council?" So I have publicly come out and said that I am with Our Water Tucson. Prior to them putting together a formalized, prior to them putting together a formalized organization and a coalition, I had stated, Ed, that I got your back on this. We are one of the only counties in this, well, city. The city of Tucson Water is very much so different than the state of Arizona and their water rights. We have seen other cities do differential water rates. But what I wanted to do is put it in the context of racial equity. If we look at the Poverty and Urban Stress Report, that was very much so pushed with the direction of Councilmember Finrez, we noticed that within the city of Tucson, we have extreme fluctuation in wage. We have extreme fluctuation in income. And so for me, this is, differential water rates is a racial equity issue for me. I believe that we should have it. I believe that we should focus on prioritizing folks who aren't sprawling. We should prioritize the built infrastructure within our city of Tucson. And so I'm 100% behind the Our Water Tucson crew. I'm not sure on the percentage. And I would like to use the, I would like to use the expertise of our experts at the city level. But I genuinely am behind differential water rates. So the next question I have is, who is your opponent in Ward 6? And what will you do to improve that person's job beyond what you've already said? So for me, I'm not, this, me running for office is not against anyone. This is, I'm running for Ward 6 Councilmember. I know right now, Councilmember Kazachik is in this space. And I know Miranda is running for this, for this position as well. For me, what I would like to do is improve the way we do government and interject vision. Right now, we have someone who is extremely pragmatic. And that's what I hear at the doors. Folks are saying that Steve Kay is one of the most pragmatic people they've ever met. But really, what he lacks is vision. And what I can believe is that that can be created through community. I have spent, in my job as a senior policy advisor with the city, there was no shortage of community conversation I wasn't part of. Prior to working for the city, I was a part of Barrios Neighborhood Coalition. And we put on those community charrettes where we talked about development. We talked about the stuff going on in our neighborhoods. And that's really where we were at. We learned from our community. And we turned that into policy. And that's why, when I worked for the city, we created the Office of Equity. That's why we focused on the Commission on Equitable Housing and Development. We took those conversations and we made that drastic shift. So for me, as running for Ward 6 Councilperson, you're going to get someone who has larger vision, who has lived in this space their whole life, who was raised, whose family was raised in this space, three generations deep on Main and in university. Like, this is my home. And that's why my whole platform is rooted in home. Because I'll be here tomorrow. I'll be here in 10 years. I'll be here in 20 years. I've lived here my whole life. The next question is, "How would you have handled the initial proposed Reed Park expansion to Barnum Hill, to take Barnum Hill and the South Pond?" So I think, as we think through the, the expansion of the zoo, I think the zoo was in one space. I think the community was in another space. And I think the city rode the line. And that's not something you'll get from me. This resides in Ward 6. And so I genuinely, I genuinely believe we need to check and recheck every time. And so I think the city failed in this position. They said, "Hey, zoo, you need to go through and do a robust community engagement process." The zoo, on the other hand, said, "We're going to do that." And they feel like they did that. And the community said that they did not do that. And so really, it was time for the city to step up and say, "This is what a robust community engagement process looks like." It looks like making sure that all of the adjacent neighborhoods are in this space. Making sure that it is done and multilingual. Making sure that it is done, that respects and honors the time of those who are being part of it. And those who don't normally engage. I think one of the geniuses of the councilmember that I worked for was, she would always ask, "Who is in the space? Look around the space. Think about the time in which the event is going on. Think about the proximity to the bus stop. Think about everything, every factor to get the most amount of people into this space of differentiated walks of life." And for me, that is radical hospitality. That is what I learned from Congressman Ron Barber. That is who I learned, that is what I learned from Lane. That is what I learned from so many different people. And so would I have made a different decision? I don't know. I would not have, I would not have let it get that far. I genuinely believe, I do not think we would have gotten to the table and the community would have, 30,000 people would have said, "We felt disenfranchised from this space." I know that would not have happened if I was in that space. So hopefully, that addresses, answers the question. Allison Hughes, a better way of asking the question is this. Do you support increasing water rates for people living in unincorporated areas who receive City of Tucson water, which is what I understand to be the proposed? Yes. So I do, I do, I do support increasing water rates for those who live in unincorporated areas. And the reason being is because if Tucson is going to take a stance of focusing on environment and sustainability, we have to prioritize those who live in incorporated Tucson. And we have to focus on our infrastructure. And so, but I do think income and racial equity play a large role in this. The reason I say that is because if you look at those maps identified in the Poverty and Urban Stress Report, you will find that communities of color could not afford to live in central Tucson. And so they have moved to unincorporated areas or outside of the city of Tucson. If you look at wage, a lot of folks did not settle in Tucson, the middle of Tucson. And so I do believe that we have to take a nuanced approach to this. Do I have the answer to how we take that nuanced approach? I do not. But I believe our water department does house those experts. And I would love for them to be at the table and discuss this with me. But I also would like those folks who lived in unincorporated Tucson to be a part of this discussion. And we're having those discussions now. I would love to see the findings once they come out. What will you do to address climate change? That is a great question, and I have an answer to that. So the last part of my, of my platform is environmental justice. And so right now, I think someone is repeating, my bad. So for environmental justice, I think right now we should focus on transitioning from what individually we can do to a group responsibility. So for me, I'm using the word justice very tangibly. I want to, I want to ensure that we're making meaningful and very intentional steps, regardless of race, color, national origin, and income in respect to development, implementation, enforcement of environmental laws. But I want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that is funding itself. And so I want to focus on an electrical infrastructure that is sustainable. I want to continue the work that Steve Kay has done on PFAS mitigation and cleaning up our water. My family has been here for three generations deep. My family has been here for three generations deep. They've lived on the south side. Um, and they do not trust their water. So that is a big issue for me. That is something that I have lived with my whole life. What I would love to do is do a concept that was brought up by our Planning and Development Services. And that is a storm water infrastructure fund. To replenish our aquifers, but also make sure that the money is 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 always there because what we always hear. Is we cannot prioritize our environment because there's no money for it. So how do we do that? We use the federal infrastructure funds that are coming in from the Biden administration. I think the the number is around two billion dollars. We create, we start that. Infrastructure fund, but also we start to prioritize our infrastructure here in the city of Tucson. And we also work with everyday community and our neighbors um to reduce the heat light, heat island effect. And that's more than just planting trees. It's being, that's a level of intentionality that comes to a green master planning process. You see groups like Fuga, which are the the cyclists uh throughout the city of Tucson who have been calling. For a green master planning process. They ride their bikes. I ride my bikes. I've been hit on my bike three times in the city of Tucson. That's a part of mobility justice, but it really comes back to. The way we plan for environmental justice. We shouldn't have to get around the city of Tucson in cars. But also this harkens back to accessibility and inaccessibility. I want to focus on uh what's next after. Let me take a step back. I want to focus on. What have we done in the past and what is currently working? And the reason I say that is because if we look at some things that aren't working over the last year, uh. The predecessor for me, council member um Kazachik. Uh, put up an alternative to uh throwing our glass in the recycle bin. For dollars. And so now if you're recycling glass, you have to take it to a facility. I do not think that there was enough consideration taken into that process. As someone who rides their bike. It it becomes extremely excessive inaccessible for me. Um, and when you think about that, my next door neighbor who is ninety years old. Um, I end up taking their glass for them um because. What we have created is a system in which you need a car, in which you need to go, in which you need to do um. And as I did a poll and part of my campaign is really focusing on checking back with our community. Every time we make a decision, we check back in. As I checked in the other day on Twitter with all the folks who have been following my campaign. Uh, only forty percent of them say right now that they recycle. After they can no longer stick their glass in their blue bins, only forty percent of them say they're actively recycling their glass. Of that forty percent, only ten percent of them have cars. And so really they're having to find new ways to to recycle. Um, which is creating a level of in- inaccessibility. And so really what I want to focus on uh with environmental justice is really how are we delivering services? How are we making them accessible and how are we planning for the future? The next question is, how can we have more affordable renters when so many people? So many, but not all apartment companies are just in it for the money. That is a good question. Uh, I do not expect a business to be humane. I can't expect um. The rental company to be humane. What I can do is work with the the city of Tucson uh on a, on a few different things. Um, so the first thing I talked about was source of income protections. If you have a voucher, if you're low income, if you have a voucher. Or if you receive social security, social security and disability, if you receive anything that is not. The traditional paycheck, you should be able to find place and home wherever you can. And right now there is no protection that says a housing provider. Can can say no. They ultimately, if you went to a housing provider and said, I have social. Well, no, not social security. So if you have like a veteran voucher or went to any of these other places, they could deny you based on your source of income. That's where on the federal level, which I have experienced with working with Elizabeth Warren and Orrin Hatch to push. Source of income protections on the for federal level, but it went nowhere. It stalled in the house um. That's where we start to focus. We start to make sure that people have access and opportunity to use that voucher. And. Ultimately, it's gonna be, it's gonna take a lot more than just source of income protections. It's going to take city of Tucson having some of its own housing stock. And the way we do that is using some old buildings, not. Traditionally old, but just unused facilities into retrofitting, retrofitting them into housing. Uh, in Tucson, there is no sort shortage of buildings that have. Become apartment, I mean, that have become businesses and they just sit. Um, the city of Tucson can buy that building. We have the money. We have used the the funds um. And so it's it's being more creative, looking at ways we can. Land bank to bring down the cost. I know we can't do rent controls or all of that, but we really can get creative with our solutions. And then we can also um. This, we also talked about community development corporations from the city level. That's great. There are a few in the city of Tucson bef- already. Uh, I was a part of one that we created at the Dunbar Pavilion. Um, and ultimately. The federal government is stepping in line and saying that's the way we get to um. More affordable housing is investing into community development corporations. We also should look towards um working with folks like uh the land trust, the land trust model. Uh, and so there are a ton of ways that we can do this. It just requires a level of planning from our Housing and Community Development Department, our Planning and Development Services. Our community who knows what should be in their neighborhood and what shouldn't be in their neighborhood um in accordance to their neighborhood plan. But they're not all being done at the same table. So I would love to be that person who brings everyone to the table uh and looks at what's the best solutions for our neighborhoods. Typically, how many people are on staff or a council person? Do you have folks in mind already? Does the city offer a living, a living wage to people and their staff? So for me. My staff, um, I've already made this commitment. My staff will be. Um, age diverse. It will be ethnically diverse. It will be um. Very much so different. I was one of seventy black employees for the whole city of Tucson. That is less than the five percent that make up the whole city of Tucson. Uh, and so I've already made that commitment and my commitment. Comes with more commitments. You can't express, expect the most diverse in age. You can't expect the most diverse in um. Uh, in. In in diverse, you can't think of diversity in the larger sense uh without paying a livable wage. So yes, right now I have supported the fight for fifteen, but I support a livable wage. I tweet about it every day. Um, if you go on my Twitter, I literally will talk about how the livable wage, if. The wage had kept up with production, then our li- then our wage right now would be twenty-three dollars. And so uh, that's where my head is. I am not going to pay anyone less than what they deserve. Uh, and so I I know that the city right now has gotten up to a fifteen dollar minimum wage. That is not where my head's at. I'm thinking beyond that. Next question is, can you discuss your position on the RTA? It benefits. Its benefits to the city of Tucson and its future. So this is where I feel like I can do, I can bring in a lot of uh. That radical hospitality. It's going to take someone who is very visionary, but it's also going to take someone with with radical hospitality in mind. And so if you look on my website again at my hundred day plan. I'm going to have all of the experts in the room and that's lived experience include included, not just textbook. So when we start thinking about RTA. Right now it prioritizes the expansion and getting everywhere in cars. For me, that is not sustainable, that does not reflect our environment and that is not future planning. Sorry if you hear my dogs. I got three of them and they're big. They do their own life um. So for me. Do I support the RTA? Yes. And I believe that we need to advocate. For the city of Tucson. As someone who has lived in Ward six, I do not support expanding more roads. I do not support um not centering community in all this. So I support funding transit oriented development. Focusing on um our busing systems, creating safer ways for bicyclists to get around town. Um, but also prioritizing our neighborhood streets and you'll hear me say that a million times. My next door neighbor, uh, he has lived in his home for two generations and he tells me all the time. You know, the last time our road was repaved? And he says twenty years ago. Cause his dad owned the house. Uh, and so. Uh, I have to hear these anecdotal stories, but I know. As someone who has lived in their space this their whole life, my family, Western Hills um over there by Kino. I know that neighborhood hasn't had their roads, their neighborhood streets repaved. Working in Ward one, I have seen. Roads that have not been repaved since the eighties and nineties. And so for me, it's prioritizing our neighborhood streets and making sure that Tucson. Gets what's best. If we're putting a lot of the tax revenue that comes in, then we should get quite a bit that comes out um. And that's. Where I stand on RTA. I am going to advocate for my community because that's what they have asked me to do. Uh, would you support green business leaders? Will you support the green business leaders to help? Um, that is a great question. I am. I am a hundred percent. Behind bringing in our experts into into conversations. And the reason I keep saying it like that is because. I am, I am a housing policy person. My frame, my core competency, what I went to school for, what I worked in after school was housing policy. And I know that the city of Tucson does an amazing job of collecting experts. Um, I know that our community has our experts as well. I know um that we have folks from the University of Arizona. I know we have tradesmiths. I know we have uh. Folks who have worked in every industry. They are the experts in their lived experience. I want to bring each one of them to the table. So if the green business leaders have a nuanced perspective, they need to be in the space and be a part of the conversation. That is my um, do you live in Ward six? Yes, I live in Ward six. That's the only way I was able to run for. I've lived. My wife and I have only lived in Ward six uh. As we've lived together um. I'm gonna go back up to a question I may, I missed. And then I'll come back down. Do you have any relation? Do you have any thoughts about the city's relationship with the? Corporate run hospitals in Tucson that are increasingly. Unable to deliver care. Take care of its health professionals and serve community needs. Um, so to answer your question. Uh, that is a part of my platform. So opportunity is really public health. So I want to, I want to prop up an office of public health within the city of Tucson. Right now we use the services uh that are um given to us through the county. We saw during COVID, that does not work. We kept getting um. And I think Dr. Cullen does an amazing job, but I think at the city level, we need an expert. We need someone who is in the city manager's ear. Either as an independent um department or as someone who is on the city manager's staff. But that is their core competency. They are going to give policy perspective. They are going to say. Here's how to use our COVID nineteen dollars the most effectively. Here is how we prioritize neighborhoods. This is how we prioritize our workers. This is how we prioritize our aging in places. And so uh. Yes, I do have, I do have. Your question is, do you have thoughts about the city's relationship? I do not know the city's relationship. As I worked in the Ward one office, I can say that I did not see a working relationship with private run hospitals. The question is, uh, are you bilingual in English, Spanish as a heritage speaker? So my first language is Spanish. Um, do I currently speak Spanish? No. Uh, and that is, uh, I am a, I am a product of. Uh, no child left behind and English only education and uh. It was very much so discouraged to speak Spanish in school. Um, and so. Uh, I will be hiring staff who uh speak mult- who are multilingual. The next question was, how can you advocate for neighborhood, for neighborhood when Tucson is vastly outnumbered on RTA? Um, I think right now with mayor and council, we have, we have the momentum behind advocating for neighborhoods to be perfect. Perfectly honest with you, I. I think um. Council member Cunningham, which you'll hear from from the next week, he has made that commitment. Um, I think. Um, based on voting record, um specifically around the zoo. Uh, we can, we can advocate for our neighborhoods. Um, and it really is gonna be us playing. I hate to use the phrase of of Steve K. It's gonna be a little bit like playing chicken, but I do not believe. That we, it it's, it should be that process. I think we should really call in the um. The regional transit authority and just have a conversation about how do we do what's best for the city of Tucson? And so advocating for neighborhoods. It's going to take community conversations, but then it's gonna require the action after. I think what we get caught up in is the conversations and not the action. And so uh. To hearken back another step to the zoo, the zoo process. With that, we did not lay out what our clear cut tangible goals were and a timeline. And so for me, it's saying we are going to have. For example, three community meetings. And each community meeting will be facilitated and we're going to get an outcome and an action from each community meeting. That progresses us to an overall resolve. And so I believe we should have that conversation with all of the folks who are going to benefit from RTA. Um, what neighborhood do you live in? I live in Tormi Park. That's where we start all of our our canvases. It's right next to San Clemente. I was fortunate enough to to purchase my home here with my wife. And it was through using first time home buyer programs. I do not believe that I would have been able to ever purchase a home. It was not something that that. For myself, I I ever thought I could do or be willing to do. Um, but I used first time home buyer programs. They paid thirty thousand dollars on my down payment. And the contingency was I live in the city. I pay my taxes. I do everything that uh keeps me rooted in this space. Um, I would have done that anyways. I would have been a renter. I, most of our city are renters, but. Really, it took a level of investment in my community and I was, I was, I was happy to oblige. That answers the questions. If you have more questions, please throw it in the chat. I'm gonna keep talking. Um, I'm gonna go back to something that we talked about. So. Thus far, we've talked about housing, opportunity. We've talked about environment. I want to talk about mobility because this is where it gets a little bit shaken up. And I'm gonna blow your mind, everyone. I have a policy suggestion that focused, that frames, and then it gives us an outcome. So we see the problem. Here's the outcome. So uh, last year. Our city went through a participatory budgeting process. That's where we went out to the community. And we said, community, where should we put our funds um for community investment? And our community said. Everything but police. And it made people feel extremely um uncomfortable because we were challenging the status quo. We were challenging the traditional model. Um, and so for me, taking that information. Uh, I needed to know where the data lied and I needed to know where our community lies. And so uh. My policy suggestion based on the problem presented, the problem was. TPD put out their their statistics that said um. Black Tucsonans in two thousand nineteen were were charged at a disproportionate rate. Um, it said that they were sixteen times more likely to be charged in a school offense, creating that school to prison pipeline. Uh, they were five times more likely to be charged with not having a driver's license. They were five times more likely to be involved or charged with a crime involving marijuana. They were four times more likely to be charged with disorderly conduct. They were three times more likely to be uh charged with failure to appear. Uh, and that's five percent of our population. So that was the problem. Our our community said the problem is disproportionate rates in policing. The solution I am putting forward is decoupling TPD from traffic safety. Uh, and we can do that. We've seen other cities do that. Uh, we have to understand that TPD has to cut some of their services. And they've outlined what they're willing to cut. But really what it's going to take is some future planning and using our our transportation and mobility department to do some real visioning. We're gonna have to look at what it looks like to to have. Our police not involved in traffic stops. And so really it's gonna take some skillful engineering. So that is my drastic policy approach to 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 traffic safety. Um, but I want to focus on prioritizing our neighborhood streets um with um. The Department of Transportation and Mobility. As I've knocked doors, I've heard stories from community members who have lived in their homes for twenty plus, twenty plus years. And have seen very little road maintenance. I want to improve Tucson's chance of getting a fair shot. With those RTA funds. I want to focus on a bus rapid transit system. And I want to focus on prioritizing transit oriented development, much like we've seen in the sunshine mile. Perfect. I am going to um. Harken back to the questions. Um, have you thought about a large cooling center? With their own generation, uh, generators on standby for power outage? We do not have access um. So to better understand your question, I think what you're asking about um. I think what you're asking about is um. Our ability. To be sustainable if our grid goes down. And I do think that's something we need to have uh in our green mobility, our green master planning process. So as we're thinking about sustainability, we have to think about what happens when all things go wrong. Um, and so I want to. Um, and so I wanna start that planning process. We have community leaders who are already saying that's something they wanna do. Um, do we think, do you think the city should have its own cooling generators? I'm not a hundred percent sure. That's not my core competency. That's not my expertise. But if you, that is your expertise, I would love to use you as my expert and say that we should. Um, I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to engage. I'm willing to look at what policy su- solutions and suggestions our community has because you guys are the experts. We are all the experts, and that's why I keep saying our Ward Six, our Tucson. Um, Allison says, I noticed you ran for Congress in twenty twenty. Since you uh send there, since there is an open seat now, now you, why are you running for, uh, why not run for that instead of COT? So that is a clear example of a twenty, I was twenty-five-year-old putting the cart before the ho- the horse. I thought that I could run the world and 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 run for Congress. Um, and I possibly would have tried to mount a a large campaign. Um, but it takes a level of practicality, and it takes asking your community questions. Um, but also, after discussing with my wife, it just wasn't a viable solution. So we just, we decided not to run. Um, and I feel like it was a, it took, it was a moment to slow me down. It really made me think about how do we focus, how do I focus on the community I wanna create for my kids? I've been, my wife and I have been married for five years now, and we're, we're at that point of transition of of starting a family. And really, how do we focus on our neighborhoods? How do we focus on our streets? How do we focus on all of those things that allowed me to find place and community here in the city of Tucson? How do we create that opportunity for the next? That's how we prioritize our parks. That's how we pro- prioritize our bike safety and creating more murals. Um, how do we prioritize uh public health and accessing our our grocery stores and our food deserts? Those are all things, and it takes a level of perspective. So my failed Congress run, that'll probably never happen again. Um, running for Ward Six and winning Ward Six, that's where I'm at. That's where I wanna be. Um, this is my life and this is my home, so I'll be here. Um. They mentioned the the drinking democratically, everyone, June twenty-ninth. The next question is, what are you, what are you, what are your alternatives to traffic policing? Um, traffic engineering, that is my suggestion. Um, we've seen other cities do it. Uh, we've seen DC do it. We've seen Philadelphia do it. Um, those are clear-cut examples of how they've used traffic engineering to solve uh everyday police stops. And what they saw was, um, a decrease in, um, um, unintended, or um, they saw a decrease in police shootings uh regarding uh traffic stops. But also what they saw was safer streets. And I so, I know in the city of Tucson, this can, this is something we can look into. This is something we can work with the Department of Transportation and Mobility as we start the Smart City Initiative to focus on these different things. So I'm very energized about doing that. Uh, do you think Tucson has racial disparities? And if so, do you think it will affect your run? Do I believe Tucson has racial disparities? I think the data says we do. I think the data's outlined in the Poverty and Urban Stress Report tell a story. Our story, it talks about wage inequality. It talks about racial disparities. It talks about uh class differences. Um, and I think, do these disparities affect your run? Yes and no. So yes, I say yes because my campaign has had to become really creative. Uh, as we look at the city of Tucson and the way people canvas and the way people interact with their communities, as a black man, I know I can't go out after dark. And we know that, we learned that our first few weeks um of campaigning. Uh, the way we found this out was we were, I was with a group of five canvassers and myself. Uh, I being the only black male of a part of that, but we separated at one point in time. And someone said, you don't belong here. You do not belong in our neighborhood, and they started to follow. And my staff and the folks who are with us started to feel extremely unsafe. Uh, and so we had to make that commitment very early on that we would no longer canvas after dark. And so we go home after dark, but that is not the isolated situation. We get that probably about once or twice a week. Is that going to stop me? No. Uh, do I believe that our community is better than that? Yes. Do I think that that is a minority of our our community who thinks backward like that? Yes, I think that is a minority of our community. Do I feel like, um, it is going to affect my run? No, you will see me out there every single day knocking doors, learning from my community, turning that into policy, putting that up on my website. So thank you for that question. Um, that was very direct, and I thank for that. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Andres, I just wanted to jump in to say that we only have a couple minutes left, and I was wondering if you could give us a closing statement and uh tell people um how they can get a hold of you and how they can support your run for office.
Yeah, so I know I had a script, and I probably shouldn't have even created one, and I I gave you guys access to that document. On that document, you'll see who I am. You'll see what is home, housing opportunity, mobility justice, and environmental justice. You'll see my future planning, which is my hundred-day plan, and talk about this election specifically. This is the first time you're gonna be able to vote for an African-American uh since nineteen eighty. Um, we have yet, we have not had an African-American serve on city council since nineteen eighty. So I'm very excited about that. Afro-Latino, first of my family to run for office. Um, and so it's an extremely important election. I want you to engage in a way that you've never engaged before. The way you engage is there's uh on that document, and I'll go ahead and drop it one more time. Uh, you have the ability to say how you wanna interact with my campaign. Uh, and there are a variety of different ways. You can donate, which is traditional, but I'd rather see your face. I'd rather interact with you and learn from you. Um, and so uh on that Google Doc that says Greater Tucson, Greater Democrats of Tucson, you can say how you wanna interact with our campaign. I've had people draw photos, and we use it as content on our social media. I've had folks come out and canvass with us, which has been super amazing, and I've learned from their experience. I've had people donate. I've also had people tell me when to sh- when to show up um and learn and keep being a part of conversations. So that's how I want you to to join my campaign. Tell me how you're gonna join my campaign. I think right now we have an election that starts on July third. You're gonna get your ballot on July third. I need you to vote for me, and I need you to engage. So uh, fill out that Google Doc. Let me know your name, your email, your phone number. I'll give you a call. I'll learn how I can interact with you. I think that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much, Andres. Really learned a lot and enjoyed hearing you talk and and spell out your programs. Uh, and with that, I'm gonna close the meeting and uh invite everybody to come back next Monday at noon when we'll have uh more people running for office and incumbent office holders. So with that, thanks very much, Andres. I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm gonna end the meeting for everybody. So thanks again.